Keeps here. We'll see what's going on. But this should take about, hopefully, again, half hour, 45 minutes, then we'll try to get to as many questions as we possibly can. There's a lot to go through tonight. We've got a lot to talk about. We've got, uh, we've got stuff to talk about with events, with Raid Liaison, and also with bank, as well as new member and alt invites, both. Okay? So please stick around. Plus, we're also gonna be, uh, I'm also gonna be talking a lot about a new, a new thing for the guild that we're gonna be discussing right now. Welcome for all those, for all of our new members. Welcome to the guild. I hope that you have found it to be, over the last week or so, um, a very, uh, good guild for you. It's a, it's pretty cool. And I think that, um, while Darius has all of the, uh, has all the numbers. And, um, are you in here? Yeah, you are. Okay. While he has all the numbers, I just want to say a couple of things about this guild before we get going. For all the new members, this is a very active guild. This is a guild of doers. We've seen this over the last six months where these guys have been very, very impressive on, on everything that they do within the guild and, and for the guild and because of the guild. And it's, it's really a unique experience to be a part of, uh, the, the Convert to Raid Guild. And, and for that, I thank all of you for, for joining us. It's, it's really weird to, for, for me and for the rest of the guys and the crew and to think about this. Because, uh, when we initially started this guild, we were like, ah, you know, it's only gonna be like, you know, maybe like 50 guys just going, "Hey, guys, you wanna do something?" And then leaving right away. And this has not been the case. It has been thousands of people, uh, coming to this guild and hanging out for a long period of time, getting together with other people. We're making connections within the guild, which is great. Uh, and within Aerie Peak and, and the Greater Wow Community, which is always awesome. And for that, we cannot, uh, thank you for, for everything that you do, um, within the guild and, and because of it. Darius, why don't you give us the breakdown of, just this last month, we, because of the Blizzard 50% off sale, we had a huge influx of people and of, uh, alt characters and everything like that. Darius, what do we have for, what do we, what was the final number for, um, for the number of invites that we did? I know that we rounded it, but...
So, uh, can you hear me? Is my mic all right?
Yes, your mic is fine.
Okay. I was told it was bad. We did, we did about, over the last, let's say, two weeks, we did about 900 invites.
That's crazy.
Over the last two weeks. So, um, when everyone's filing taxes and whatnot, let, you know, include Blizzard on there because you wrote them a huge check.
Right, right. We paid for Zarheim this, this month alone, I think.
To put, to put it in perspective, though, we have, at now, we have about 5,500 total people in the guild across all seven guilds. Of those 5,500, 4,114 are unique people.
Right. So 4,100 unique users, um, within, within our system at, at least. And so, I mean, that plays a lot to, uh, how many people are in this guild. I mean, that's basically how many people are in this guild, right?
So I think that's how many people are in this room right now.
That's, and that's great. We, we love having you here. We really do. Um, and with all the influx of new people, uh, there have been, uh, more growing pains. This is, this is something that happens with us. Uh, we've only been active for six months. We went from zero to 4,100 people in six months. This is crazy. This is craziness to me. We have seven co-guils. Uh, our seventh one, Mobus, or Whale Shark, is, uh, level 22 or 23 right now? Uh, something like that. And again, that's craziness. This shouldn't be happening. We just opened up Mobus last week. This is weird, and it's awesome, and it's great, and I love it. So, just as a reminder to all of our, all of our veterans, all those guys that have been around a while, and to all the new people that are coming in, um, I want to reiterate some things about, uh, about what, what, player conduct, I guess. I want to remind everybody about player conduct because, uh, over the last month or so, because of all of the people that we have, because of how visible we are as a guild, we get a lot of attention. And sometimes, we don't always get the most positive attention. And I want to, um, I want to talk to you a little bit about, uh, the, the new charter. Spencer HD and, and myself and, and the officers and the council have been working on, uh, a new charter. We, this is a thing that should always be in flux and always be kind of updated. And the last month, uh, the last couple of weeks, uh, we've been kind of paying more attention to this charter and saying, "Okay, let's update this. Let's make sure that this works for everybody, and let's make sure that we can get this out to everybody before, uh, for the town hall." Um, the big point here is with the guild charter comes a new thing. And that's the guild credo. The guild credo is a little phrase, a little, a little, an, an idea about what we stand for. And I want to talk to you guys about that right now. The Convert to Raid Guild credo is C-T-R. It is community, teamwork, and respect. Okay? And by community, I don't mean just, uh, your, your raid group. I don't mean just this, your co-guild. I don't mean just this entire guild of seven co-guils. And I don't mean just Aerie Peak. We gotta think beyond that every single step of the way. So this is the Greater Wow Community, is what I'm talking about when I talk about community. We are, we have a really awesome thing going with us. But we need to spread that word to other folks. And, you know, get them involved with, you know, whatever they want to do. And it doesn't matter if they want to join us or not. That's their, that's their prerogative. But, you know, we need to at least spread this kind of positivity throughout our experiences with other players. And we do that with teamwork. So teamwork is, is the next rung in the ladder, if you will. And this goes with everything that you do. LFD, LFR, uh, if you're pugging in, in like open raid or something like that. Or if you're talking to somebody in, in trade chat and trying to get something done. You know? This is all a part of, of teamwork. And, and it doesn't matter whether it's PvP, Auction House, uh, PVE, whatever, pet battles, I don't care. Or just an event somewhere. You know, work with others to make sure that we're, we're spreading this positivity once again. And we do that with respect. We respect our fellow guildy. We respect our fellow Aerie, Aerie Pekan? Aerie, Aerie Pekan? That sounds weird. But, uh, Aerie Peakite? I'm not sure. Uh, but, but spread it with, uh, respect towards everyone. Everyone, within the guild, outside of the guild, it doesn't matter. These are the, this is the basic player conduct that we want to reinforce every single day. And, uh, to that end, I'm sure that Devonah is, is working furiously to get, uh, that up onto the, uh, motto of the day in every co-guild, uh, pretty much as we speak. And if not right now, maybe after this meeting. Uh, but we're gonna be hammering home this, uh, this idea of CTR, community, teamwork, and respect. And we ask that, we, we don't just ask this, by the way, uh, it's more of a, we expect this from our members. We expect you guys to be playing along with your community, making sure that you're working within a team and that you're respecting everybody. And, you know, I, I don't want to talk about what happens if you don't do that. You know, be all kind of mean and evil. Uh, but, I mean, obviously, if there's a problem, we have to fix it somehow. So we have to make sure that everybody's playing together. And, and that's the one way that we're gonna try to do it, is with this new credo of CTR. Um, we do have also a new thing with, um, moving on to the next item. And to Jules, get ready. Uh, we do have a new invite policy, and this is for both new members and for alts. So listen up if you want to bring any character, any new character into the guild. Okay? Jules, you ready?
I'm ready.
All right, go for it.
Hi, guys. Thanks for coming tonight. We have been working really hard on a new policy and procedure for the invite, mainly because it has been a bit of a challenge lately.
Yeah, especially with that 50% off deal. That was, um, that, that was like, that was like one of the most difficult things ever, because they hit it on us, uh, like right after the beginning of the month, and we were like, "Oh, boy. All right, we've gotta, we've gotta keep going until, uh, until this thing is over." So it was, it was, it was kind of painful, a little bit, guys. We had 900 invites over this last month.
So we want to thank you all, first of all, for your patience, as we have kind of made some adjustments through the process. Um, we've also been aware that there's not always been, um, the easiest time finding an officer for some of you. And so what we wanted to do was to try to make it a little easier for you, um, to find a time for your alts to be invited at certain times of the week and in different times of the day. So the officers put their heads together. We decided to talk about what our availability was. And we are going to actually schedule certain times of the day, um, at, for three days a week, for about four hours at a time, to make that happen. And that is actually going to start this Sunday. Um, on Sunday, we will be inviting people, um, server time from 8:00 AM until 12:00 PM during the live show. Um, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM, and these are all Pacific time again. Mondays, we will do the early mornings, 1:00 AM to 4:00 AM, 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And Thursdays, we're gonna do noon to four, and officers will be on duty. But the other part of this, if you are bringing friends to the guild, is to let them know that we are going to be inviting new people during that time. We are not going to be doing the first seven days of the month procedure anymore, since we will be having people in there.
Right.
So we're really excited to kind of make this a little easier. What we are also going to do, if we can, if an officer has some free time, is we will pop into the channel for CTR LFO to invite you. Um, but we will guarantee that someone will be available during these times. And that way, you know that if you need an alt invite, you can look on Sundays, Mondays, and Thursdays, and this will also be in the guild charter.
Right. Uh, and, and this guild charter, by the way, the, the one that I'm, this one has notes on it. But, but the other one, uh, will be available online in the forums, uh, and, uh, Spencer, actually, I think, I think it's available now in its current form. If you guys want to go ahead and go ahead and look for that, that's all in the forums, forums.signalsmedia.com. Uh, and then go to, uh, Convert to Raid Guild Aerie Peak, and it should be in there. And I'm not sure exactly where, because I haven't looked, uh, so my bad. But all this stuff will be in there, including these times. So Sundays, again, Sundays, 8:00 AM to noon, and then 6:00 PM to 10:00. Uh, Mondays, for the Aussies, we have 1:00 to 4:00 AM. And for, you know, really late-nighters. And then we also have 6:00 PM to 10:00 on Monday as well, and then Thursday's noon to four. Uh, we hope that this will make sure that we can meet the expectations that, that we, that we need to have of being online, so that we can invite you guys in and be a regular thing. So I think this is, this will be a good thing.
Absolutely. And one of the things Zog wanted to mention too was that we just, we want to ask you guys, um, for your, for your help too. Um, most of our officers are on raid teams, and so, um, we have had a couple of times where officers have been whispered directly for invites for your alts. And we know that you're really excited to get your alts into the guild. Um, but we would just like to ask that you not ask an officer for an invite directly. We ask that you go to the channel. Um, if there's an officer on duty, we'll be there to help you. And if you are on a raid team and it's outside the normal timeframe that we're inviting, and you need to get that, that alt into the guild for a raid, just let one of us know that specifically.
Right. Uh, and that, that goes with, uh, make sure that, you know, raid leaders out there, you guys should know this as well. If you have a new member, uh, coming onto your team, or, you know, you found somebody, that's awesome. That's great. But if it's outside of the times that we normally invite people, um, then you can always, uh, submit many, in many different ways. CTR Officers is the big one, uh, but then we also have CTR Raids, which is for our raid liaisons, uh, which we will get to in just a moment, so get ready, Lou. And, uh, and all that kind of fun stuff. So, uh, but before we get to that, I want to talk about one other thing that, that you guys may not even really think about too much. And that is the bank. Um, the bank is here for you guys, and we've made some updates onto the bank for, especially for raiders and raid leaders. Uh, and here to talk about, uh, all the different things about bank is Finger Guns. Finger.
Hey, you guys. Um, I'm only gonna take a few minutes, but we have made some changes that you guys will see in the guild banks. The last three tabs of every guild are now for raid leaders and our raiders to be able to keep supplies and pull stuff out as they need it and stuff like that. So what you'll see, for the most part, is that there is one tab for all of your feast needs, one tab for all of your flasks and pots, and one tab for all of the extra supplies like, your gems and enchants and fun stuff like that. Um, one of the things that we heard and the feedback that we received from a lot of people is that they have their own alt banks for their, for their raid groups, and, and I have that for our group as well. Um, however, this is a place where you can throw stuff like pots and flasks that you may find you need in the middle of a raid group, and you can just throw down a bank and be able to pull that stuff out. So that's there for you guys to use. Please take advantage of it. And the other, I, I know it's differing based on which guild you guys are in, but the other one is for stuff like trade supplies. Um, I know that there's lots of cloth and a lot of the banks to be able to help out guildies with bags and whatnot.
We try, and we try to make sure that, that all of the stuff in there is, uh, current tier. So a, as much as possible, as, as much makes sense. Um, we try to make sure that stuff is current tier. And if you're dumping stuff in there like grays and, and whites and, that's, I guess that's okay. I mean, we'll sell it. That's not like a big deal. But, uh, at the same time, we, if you're filling up a bank to its capacity, uh, please don't do it with grays and whites. Uh, please make sure that it's current tier materials at, at least, so that we can make the most of it.
Yeah, that's one question that I've actually gotten, is I'll have people who will put stuff in, and then I'll take it out to throw it on A H or to vendor, and people will get a little bit scared that they're putting in the wrong stuff, or that they're wasting, whatever. Um, you know, just be aware, if I'm taking stuff out, there's a good chance that I'm throwing it on the auction house, and we're putting the gold back in for the guild banks to be used for whatever we need in the guild. So it's not that anything you guys put in there is going to waste. We're using it somehow.
Yes, yes. Everything will be used. We are good survivalists.
Minus maybe bat guano.
Yeah, bat guano. Bat guano, you can send that to Colt and Darius if you want to.
They love that stuff. Everyone should send their bat guano to Darius.
Don't put it in the bank. Send it to Grand Paw, G-R-A-N-D-P-A-W, or Coltrane. Not to me. Not to me. To those guys, please. Anything else there, Guns?
I think that was it.
Okay. Um, and to give us an update on, um, everything, uh, raid liaison, by the way, raiders, just, uh, just stay close here, because, uh, we've got more for raid, raid leaders and for raiders. Oh, by the way, uh, raid leaders, you guys, um, can grab pretty much anything you need for your raid team. Uh, so I think it would behoove you to, uh, have a tune marked as raid leader for your group. Because in those raid tabs, uh, you guys currently, right now, we, we have it set to 10, uh, which means that you guys can grab pretty much anything that you need, um, within those raid tabs. Just make sure, if you're using those raid tabs in the bank, that you restock it eventually and, and, uh, help out everybody else who's looking for stuff as well. And if you need more information, you can always email CTRofficers@gmail.com, and we can, we can figure it out. But let's talk about raiding, uh, raid, raid liaison-ing, and so on and so forth. Uh, for those guys that don't know, uh, Teak actually stepped down from, from being the head raid liaison. Uh, and, uh, it was just, you know, it's, it's busyness. There's real-life stuff. There's lots of other stuff going on. Uh, and, uh, Lou, who has been around for a little while, uh, she has stepped up and has become the head raid liaison, and she's got more information for you. So Lou, take it away.
Hey, guys. How is everyone doing? Hopefully, you're killing bosses and doing all that jazz. Um, with Teak stepping down, I did put out a open, uh, application to pull some new people aboard. Um, as you guys should know, we have Remedies. Hey, Rem.
No, that's, that's like, that's a different show, I think.
That's the wrong show. We're on the wrong show here. We have Remedies helping out. Um, she was brought onboard, then had to move across the country, so welcome aboard, Rem.
Thank you.
She was not one of the people that applied. She's been, just making sure everyone knows her. Uh, I picked up two bright, shiny, snazzy new raid liaisons. First and foremost, if you guys will make him feel welcome, we have Sylvanus.
Hey, beautiful people. Really excited about it. Yep.
And then we also brought aboard Vandal.
Hello, hello, hello.
They are the newest additions to the raid liaison team. I do want all of our raid teams to make them feel welcome. Just bear in mind that there is four of us now, so we will be able to get all of your raider ranks that are going active out as quickly and as efficiently as possible.
Hey, Lou.
Hey, Zog.
I've got a question for you. How many, how many teams do we have in the CTR Guild right now? Active teams, not those that are looking for stuff, those that are active right now.
Fifty-seven.
Okay, so 57 teams for people. That's a lot of teams per person. That's all I'm saying. That's still a lot of teams per person. This is why we have raid liaisons.
And that's with, I know, um, actually, there's at least three, if not five, teams who are just about complete, that are raiding but still pugging a couple people in. So we are just growing like a weed.
You guys are nuts. That's all I'm saying. It's awesome. I love it. All right, so what else is going on with, uh, with, uh, raid, with the raider, raider rank and the raid, uh, leader rank and, and so on? And, and upwards, I guess.
Raider rank and the raid lead rank are both getting additional repairs. Those are going active, I believe, starting tonight. We're starting off with 25 gold, uh, per day. Just because we do have so many raid teams, you guys are phenomenal as far as having so many. We just, we have to make sure we can support you in the best way possible.
And the most consistent way possible, which is always the, the most difficult part of it. So we're starting it off small. We're gonna start it off at 25. We're gonna see how we go. Finger Guns is gonna make sure to, uh, check the bank. We've got, uh, Lou and the raid liaisons making sure that everybody's cool with, uh, their raider ranks and so on and so forth. And then later on, we're also gonna talk, uh, to Red, who's got some, uh, stuff cooking with events, to make sure that we can, and then not just bolster these, uh, not just to bolster these guilds, these co-guils, uh, with gold, but to make sure that you guys are having fun doing different stuff, meeting each other, all that kind of good stuff. So, uh, Lou, what else is happening with you?
Um, I've had a lot of questions come in as far as if you want to start a new raid team. Um, there's been some confusion. You do not need anyone's permission. Let me say that again. If you want to start a raid team, please start it. You don't need any of the raid liaisons' permissions. Please hit the forums, get it together, get it going. Um, you know, if you have questions or need help, you know, always contact any of us. Uh, we do have the CTRraids@gmail.com. Uh, also, if you don't have your raider rank or your roster's not correct in the raider rank, also email us there. We can get that fixed for you. Um, you know, we want to make sure that if you want the rank, you have it. But just remember, and I've said a number of times, there is requirements as to how you'll get that rank, and you can see all of that in the team pages forum. It's an announcement. Basically, you have to have your roster on the front page and then what co-guild you are in. I would like your entire team in the same co-guild.
Right. And, and you're more than willing to move people, and, and the officers are more than willing to move people that they need to, to make sure that your raid team can coexist on the same, uh, same co-guild, so we can all work together to make sure that, um, you know, and, and doing that actually benefits the, the co-guils themselves, because every time you defeat a boss, I mean, you can get some extra loot for the guild or whatever. So, I mean, it's all good. It's all gravy. Right?
It's all gravy. And with them going active, you guys need to keep us informed and up to date with any roster changes.
Right.
Please do not whisper us in game and say, "Oh, we kicked so-and-so off the team, and now we need them just changed and add them and do this." Don't whisper us. We won't remember. We'll have to tune swap and do all that. Go ahead, email us, PM us on the forums, send us an in-game mail, something that where if we can't get to it immediately at that very moment, we can be like, "Okay, we gotta add this to our to-do list," because our to-do list is very long. But we will get to it, and with four of us, we will get to it very, very quickly for you.
There we go. Uh, anything else, Lou?
Um, pretty sure that's it. Just gotta get, uh, you know, get some bosses killed from our raid teams.
Right, absolutely. And, and for those guys that don't know, Lou also does an update for the Converted Podcast with, uh, Sal and Belchnickle. Um, and if you guys haven't seen, uh, the, the podcast yet, if you guys haven't seen, um, the Converted Podcast, please, uh, check it out. Just look up the Converted on YouTube. You'll be able to find it, or on iTunes. They also do an audio version, uh, and both are amazing. And this last ad, uh, not only was Lou on it, Red was on it as well, our, our events person, uh, and, uh, Coltrane was on it, doing a little interview, and it was, it was great. I watched it today, and it was fantastic. These guys are amazing.
And you can also get your team shouted out too on the Converted. That's also an announcement in the team pages thread, and that is done, uh, bi-weekly.
And by the way, guys, for those guys that have questions, um, you can feel free, we're, we're, we're about to wrap up here. We've got Red still talking about events, but if you have questions about anything that was covered so far, or if you have your own question, you can feel free to, uh, you can feel free to talk to myself in IRC. Who else is doing IRC? Who else has got IRC duty with me? I know other, there are others.
Teak's in there.
Teak's in there. So you can, uh, you can whisper Teak as well. Um, and if you're in Mumble, who can we contact there?
Uh, you can contact Lou.
Okay. Anybody else?
Finger Guns.
Oh, Finger Guns. Finger Guns, you can contact her as well. And if you are in Twitch, if you're watching on Twitch, who can we?
That's Copperbolt and Lou.
Copperbolt and Lou. All right, awesome. What's that?
Nothing.
Okay. All right. So you can talk to those guys in, in those different channels, uh, and get questions, um, out there, and, and we'll answer them as we can, um, as we have time. We're only gonna go until latest, uh, another 27 minutes. That's the latest that we're gonna go. We're only gonna make this an hour. But we have, uh, we have more to talk about, because we're, we have one last thing to talk about, and that's events. Events are awesome. They've, they've, they've started this, they're, they're working on, uh, everything. Last month, we talked about how, uh, Red was building a team, and they're gonna start kicking zabootay all over the place. Uh, and so let's talk to Red, get a little bit of an update on what's going on with her team and, uh, and how that affects you guys. So Red, hello.
Hey.
Hello.
Uh, so, okay.
What's going on?
Um, we are crazy idea machines. Um, there are so many events currently in the plan. Every time I get on the forums, I'm like, geez, guys, we added like three more new events to our ideas page. But, um, we have two on the calendar right now. We had one yesterday. And those two are the White Weapon and Tabard Duel, which is a take your tunes clothes off, put on a tabard, put on a stinky weapon, and, and kill your friends.
Awesome.
Um, so that, I'm so excited to do that. And that one is on the forums as well. So if you go to CTR Guild, uh, US Aerie Peak, and then you go to Guild Events, um, that's where you'll get all the, the details and the updates about Guild Events. Our other event is the next day, um, which is the Cloth Gathering Event. And this is, um, part of what we are also going to be doing with our event, is trying to figure out ways to help sustain that, that 25 gold. to help sustain that twenty-five gold a day for the raiders, and also kind of bolster our guild funds a little bit, but in a fun, community-building way. So, we're gonna have a cloth competition, and it will probably be reoccurring. So you basically just go out and gather as much cloth as you can. Whoever gets the most gets a prize. Everybody loves prizes. And that is on the twenty-fourth. So, I mean, if you're interested, you don't have to sign up on the calendar. Just show up and you'll get an invite, and it'll be gravy. And that's pretty much how it's gonna go with most of our events. I know we had another one added to the forums today. Zan's Lore Corner was added. And so that'll be really cool. If you're into RP and lore, definitely check that out on the, yeah, on the events section. It's brand shiny new.
That sounds cool, man.
Yeah. Some of the other things that are in the works, and I know a lot of people have been asking about this, and since the PTR was released this past week-ish, we will be doing 5.4 bootcamps.
Awesome.
That is happening. There will be some changes to the format. We've been talking about it a lot, because it was a lot of work, and for a first time, it went great, but there are always improvements to be made. So there will be some changes, and you'll find out more about that as we kind of solidify those ideas. But if you are interested in hosting a bootcamp, and you know what you're talking about, and you're comfortable talking about it and sharing it with the guildies, definitely shoot me an email at CTRevents, or CTR Guild Events, at gmail.com. I'll also be posting a post-up once we start the official call for bootcamp posters. But if you wanna go ahead and just toss your hat, or toss your hat in the ring, is that how? Whatever. Sure, it's mine. We'll take it.
Sure, it doesn't matter. It's fine. It's all good.
But yeah, so that's, I know a lot of people are pretty excited about that. I've already had several people saying, "Hey, if you're doing another one, let me know. I wanna do it." So hopefully, that'll go smoothly, and the planning's in process for that. So, look for that. We're hoping to get that out a week to two weeks after the patch drops. So, it's kinda exciting. Another event a little closer to home that's coming up is Amazing Azeroth Races. And it's a little bit like Amazing Race. And again, more info will come on the forums. And there are so many events being planned that are in the process, because we've been putting our heads together, and it is looking great. So definitely keep your eyes out on the forums. We'll be slapping them on the calendar too. But it's gonna be a really cool next couple months for events. I'm so excited. Another thing I wanted to touch on, if you're interested in donating prizes for events, you rock, first of all. Second of all, if you're interested in that, or you have any questions regarding how that's handled, again, just email CTRGuildEvents@gmail.com. That way, we can kind of have a discussion, you know, if there's something in particular you'd like to donate, and you're just like, "Hey, do you want this?" Well, the answer's probably yes. But go ahead and just, you know, that way we can have a kind of a record of conversations, sort of like, "Hey, what happened to that?" We're keeping close tabs on all things that are donated, so that it's, there's no question about where it is, where it's going, how it's used. Also, if you have any suggestions for events, I mean, if it planners aren't the only people that can have ideas.
Yeah, I mean, really, I mean, it should be, if you guys have a great idea for an event, and you want to see it happen, make sure to put something in the forums. Just put something in the events forums. And I'm sure that Red and her team will look it over and see if they can make it happen.
Absolutely. And if you have any questions about, if you have a really large-scale event that you think that may be awesome, and you're not quite ready to slap it on the forums, go ahead and email that email again. I'm gonna say it again. CTRGuildEvents@gmail.com. And we'll put it in our events forum section, and we'll talk about it and see, you know, what the feasibility is, and if we can make that happen. And your involvement can be, you know, you can be the person who plans the event, and we can just have somebody around to help. It's whatever you wanna do, because it is your idea. So, but again, if you have any questions about any event-related items, that email's the best way to reach us, for sure.
So we have, so we have, just so that everybody kind of is familiar with these different emails, we essentially have three. We have three that are really great, okay? We have CTRGuildEvents@gmail. All these are Gmail accounts. So we have CTRGuildEvents@gmail. We also have CTRraids@gmail. And if you don't remember those, remember this one, CTROfficers@gmail.com. That's gonna be the one. We can ship that off to wherever it needs to, if we get that in the Officers Gmail. So always remember that one. But also, CTRGuildEvents and CTRraids, both of those at gmail.com. And, you know, this is one of the great things. We're trying to be more open. We're trying to be more communicative with everybody in the community. We have forty-one hundred people, and fourteen million tunes in the guild, so it's just craziness. Anything else, Red?
I think that pretty much covers it, yeah.
Okay. So we're gonna open it up for questions. I just wanna remind you guys, remember the credo, and we're gonna be pumping this out over the next couple of months, most likely even going into the future. But remember the guild credo: CTR, community, teamwork, respect. And also, if you wanna check out the new charter, that is available for you on the forums, I believe, right now. If not right now, it will be available tonight. The raider ranks and the raid lead ranks and above will be getting that twenty-five gold repair money per day to start. This is where we're starting, so we can see exactly where we're at, make sure that we can provide that for you guys regularly, until we can, and if we find that we can make more, hey, great, then guess what? You'll get more repair money. That's the way it goes.
Zog, that is actually up on the forums right now, Spencer's updated version.
Beautiful, beautiful. Alright, any questions? Any of the moderators have questions that we can attack right now?
I have one, probably for Lou. It's from Wheezy, and he asks, "Is a raid team required to be in the same co-guild, or is it just preferred that way?"
Lou, you wanna tackle that one?
Yeah, sure. You know, it makes our life as your guild liaisons a lot easier to make sure that any updates to your roster do get handled in a quick and timely manner. Example, if nine out of ten are in Shaw, and your tenth person is over in Azeroth, that is two thousand people we have to look through, rather than maybe only a thousand or eight hundred to find your entire team to make sure you are promoted. It makes our job easier, but we do understand that not everyone is always in the same guild.
Right. But the thing is too, is remember that you do get perks for everybody being in the same guild, or in the same co-guild, I should say. So if you're all in Shaw, that's great, because not only do you get, you get your fast mail for everybody, instant mail, but you also can, if you have at least, I think, eight of your members in the same co-guild, then you can also make money for the guild, which goes to the guild bank, which means that you are adding to those repair costs that everybody's gonna be eating up as they raid. So that's always nice, too. Anything else, Lou, on that?
No, I mean, that's really just, it's not a requirement to have your raider rank. It is just, it's nice.
Sure.
It's nice.
Anybody else have a question from any one of the other places that we normally get questions from?
I have an anonymous question coming from the guild chat. Basically, we've had some people who are getting a lot of spoilers, not only in-game upcoming content, but also TV shows and other games and things like that. Just wanted me to see if we could remind people not to give away too many spoilers.
That one's tougher, because there are so many different ways that people get this information. Being raiders, it's really easy to look ahead in the book. I would only ask that people respect others', I guess, right to, you know, kind of not look too far ahead. So if you can, please be mindful of those that may not be looking ahead. But at the same time, I can't necessarily say one way or the other. This is a weird line. It's a very gray area, right?
I have a question about this question. Just have a nice spoiler alert going?
Is it like for?
For 5.4, for 5.4, I'm guessing, and beyond.
Okay, I was thinking TV shows and stuff like that.
Well, it could be.
Just in general spoilers.
So if we're talking about in-game spoilers, like 5.4 and so on and so forth, that's really tough, because there is so much information right now on all of the 5.4 stuff. And if you haven't looked at it, it's pretty interesting. Anyway, no spoilers here right now, for me. But it should be, you should be mindful of it. I think it's hard to contain it. So I think both sides of this need to play well with each other, and if you really don't wanna hear it, don't look, or find a way not to pay attention to it, or, you know, you can always scream to yourself, "La la 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 la, I'm not listening! I'm not listening!" And then hopefully, by the time that you finish with that, it'll be over with.
Can I have that as a sounder, please?
Yeah, I was just thinking. It's fantastic.
I'm recording it, so there's all sorts of possibilities. Any other questions?
I have a question from Twitch about merchandising.
Okay.
The question is that you announced a couple weeks ago that you would have merchandise coming out, but it's not out yet, and is there a timeframe?
There is not a timeframe yet, because I don't have the finished, the finished designs. They're very, very close, and they are looking sweet. So, especially for those guys that are gonna be going to BlizzCon. BlizzCon is really kind of where we tend to, where we'll probably open up all the different avenues for this stuff. Shirts are probably coming before BlizzCon, but I don't know how much before. We do have, right now, I'm looking at essentially two designs. One is gonna be a Convert to Raid, just kind of generic, more generic design. It's not really generic at all. But it's not specific as the next one, which is a Convert to Raid Guild Shirt. The Convert to Raid Guild Shirt features a lion's head on it, and it's very, very wonderful. And it also has Aerie Peak US on it as well. So, that will be the Guild Shirt, and especially if you're going to BlizzCon, we're gonna be making sure that those shirts are gonna be available for you guys. We're hoping that we're gonna have the means to do that, as well as also provide the more, it's not really a generic shirt, but I'm calling it the generic shirt, because it doesn't have our guild, you know, location on it or anything like that. So, we'll have a couple of shirts, for sure, by BlizzCon. Where that will be and when that will be is all upcoming. Any other questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I have a question from Drac in the Guild, and he is wondering if we can streamline the process for looking for raid teams. The forums tend to age quickly. You see a group that fits your time and then get to the end of the thread and find out they've stopped raiding.
I know that we've been working behind the scenes on some different stuff. Dairys, are you still there? Are you tired? Are you sleepy? What's going on with you? Are you still there? Still around? I know that we were working.
Yes.
As far as LFR, well, actually, it's just looking for more, I guess, right? Was the, kind of the project that we've been kind of working on behind the scenes for the last, I don't know, four months?
Yes.
Something along those lines. Any updates on that?
We're actually getting pretty close to having something done with that. As a bigger thing, I don't know if, I'm gonna spoil it here anyway, but that whole thing is likely gonna come with an entire website overhaul.
Yeah.
With integration with calendars and, you know, the LFG system that'll integrate right into the forums and all this other nonsense. So it's taking a while, but it's gonna be pretty nuts.
We wanna make sure anytime that we develop anything new, that it makes sense for everybody right as soon as we launch it. We don't wanna, we don't wanna kind of, you know, only do half of it, and then try to make it like, "Oh whoops, we forgot this major, major part." No, we wanna make sure that it's the best experience that you guys can have ever. And I know that Dairys and his team are working behind the scenes, making sure that this stuff is looking awesome. And we have high hopes for this, or I have high hopes. Dairys, I don't know where your hopes are.
Oh, I'm gonna completely disappoint you then?
Well.
No, it'll be pretty good. It's taking a while. It's only two of us working on it. And it's something that has to be designed from the ground up, and because it integrates with everything we already have, it's pretty, it's pretty easy to use and easy to pick up and whatnot. It's just, it takes a while, so.
Yeah.
In the meantime, if you have a team that is no longer active, or you know you started a forum post to build a team, and you don't need that anymore, you can send us an email at the Officer email or at the CTRraids email, and we can get that moved to the inactive to kind of keep the clutter down. At the same time, if you are having trouble finding a group, or if you are a raid group starting, you know, put a shout-out in the Converted thread, and we can always say, "Hey, you know, the casuals are doing an open cowl for, you know, all these roles," or whatever. You know, we have a couple things in place now. They're just not as effective as maybe they need to be.
Yeah, if you're a raid leader, you should be talking to Lou and her team. I mean, these guys are here to work for you guys, so make sure that you're using the raid liaisons to help you with whatever your quest is. And if you're looking for more people, then they might have some ideas for you. And if you're looking to move people to the same co-guild, they can help there. Obviously, other officers can help as well. We are always here to help you with whatever you may need. I just wanna make that clear, because, I mean, some people think, "Oh, you have to talk to the officers." That's, "Ooh, you must have done something bad." No, we're here to help you. We're here to make sure that your experience can be pleasant. And so please lean on us when you need to, and we can help you along the way. Who opened?
And, Hizag, do you wanna touch base on using macros to advertise?
Sure.
For raid teams?
Sure. A couple of things came up in the last month or so, or whatever. As far as it relates to auxiliary channels, that's what I'm calling it, meaning CTRLFO, CTRLFG, and even Trade Chat, and, well, it doesn't really extend there, but as far as it goes with macros and other things. We ask that guild members try to go light on those things, okay? Especially in Guild Chat, it has no real place, because that should be reserved for guild chatting. Chating, you know, actual chatting. LFG, it gets a little bit different. CTRLFG. We ask that you keep the clutter down as much as you possibly can. We wanna make sure that people can still enjoy the game, not get spammed constantly. This is not us necessarily policing a channel, especially one that's open to all members of the public. But it is us saying to CTR members, "Hey, please, remember, these are all CTR members, and we wanna make sure that everybody's having a good time." And so we ask that you keep the chatter down as far as like spammy-type messages. It can be a real nuisance, and some people really don't like it. While you may be looking for another person for your team, there are other ways to do it, and more interactive ways to do it. So you might wanna not just hit a macro button, but you may wanna also, like, talk to people. That's kind of my shtick on it. There is actual information in the Guild Charter that is available now online. All of that has been addressed. Other questions?
Yeah, a couple from in-game. This is Vandal. Lou wanted me to introduce myself one more time. So, Avatar asked if there are any plans for BlizzCon that you can discuss at this point?
Yes. We have a committee going out at the end of this month to look for, to look at different sites, different possibilities for BlizzCon. What I would really like to do is I would really like to have a guild meetup at some point, and I'm not sure exactly when. and I'm not sure exactly when that is. Um, but, uh, some of the plans include, uh, possibly doing a live show of some sort. Uh, and I'm in talks with different people for that, uh, and also do a Guild meetup. Uh, so we'll, we'll keep our fingers crossed on all of that stuff as we go through. But, you know, this being our first BlizzCon and being a fairly new Guild, we have to kind of, uh, figure it out, I guess, as we go. Other question?
I actually have two more.
Go for it. Go for it, Vane. Go ahead.
One from Moredots, uh, he wanted to know if there's any chance that the merchandise will be customizable in any way?
Uh, but at this point, there are no plans for that, but that does not mean that it won't be able to. Uh, it depends on where we actually get all of this stuff from. So more on that as we release. Uh, Vane, you had one more?
Yeah, um, from Aramorty in-game, uh, he or she said, uh, that they had an idea and they discussed it with either you or someone else at some point. But, um, the question was, what do you think about a CTR starter Guild for level one to 15 folks to join? That this would allow them to get the bonuses from being in a Guild before hitting level 15?
Uh, the short answer? No, uh, it's, it's too much to handle. It's just too much to handle and at some point we have to say, we have to say no. Uh, the reason that we have people join it at level 15 is because that's when we can start to do things. Um, that's when we can start to run dungeons and, and actually work together in this team environment, this community, this team, uh, and, uh, and really work together. And, and plus it means that you're investing in your character enough to move it along, uh, which is also what we want. We want to make sure that if you, if you grab a character, that you're going to actually do things with it. Um, because we don't need level ones, uh, cluttering stuff up. And adding another Guild to the system would be hard. It would be hard. Yeah. I think that's the easiest way to say it. Um, other questions?
Yeah, I have one. Um, Katyara in Guild, um, she has a medical disability that, uh, makes it hard for her to talk in Mumble. And she's wondering, is there, she just needs help finding a raid team that'll allow her to raid without being able to really speak? And is there any help for her to find a team?
Lou?
Send her my way.
There we go.
Or mine.
Or Rem.
Or Rem.
Or Sylvanas or Vandal.
Right.
There you go.
These raid liaisons are here to help you find a team. They're here to help raid leaders, find members. They're here to connect you to, um, to the rest of what's going on, so. Um, and, and there are plenty of teams, there are plenty of teams that don't require you to talk all the time. I mean, you don't have to, I mean, uh, on the Asparagus Initiative, we have, we have some guys that don't necessarily talk all the time. Um, and that's fine. That's fine. Any other questions?
I have one more from Twitch. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Uh, Coltrain wants to know.
Oh, no.
No, 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 I'm not sure if I'm going to answer this.
Hold on.
Yeah.
Why does Zugs wear shirts five sizes too small? Man, he looks ripped. And then there was another person in the channel that wants to know if the Guild shirts will come in Zug sizes?
Uh, they will, yes. Uh, they come in child sizes. Just, no, I have no idea. Um, and, uh, I'm not answering the other one. Okay, what, what else we got?
Hey, yeah, I got, uh, two questions from in-game.
Go ahead, Sylvanas.
Uh, my lord Lou is telling me to say my name again, so this is Sylvanas.
By the way, Sylvanas was on the Converted Podcast as well. I think it was episode, what was it, three?
Something like that.
Something like that. Anyway, go ahead.
It's the best episode. Um, uh, this, this one's actually come from Yamitu and they're just asking, is there going to be slap bracelets, um, for CTR? Just to bring it back.
Slap bracelets?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Oh, boy. Uh, to be determined.
Okay. Um, and my other question is, um, more just like, uh, etiquette things. I have somebody from Anonymous, uh, they, they ask, the LFG channel and people are looking for more people. Um, they're looking, they're, uh, during raids, like, you know, pugging Gallyon or Shaa, um, they'll, they'll go ahead and pull before 10 or 15 people actually get there from raid, which, um, gets people really frustrated because they're not getting their loot or they set up this whole, um, group and they'll get to get the loot. So can you talk more about just etiquette within the Guild itself?
Yeah, it's, it, it gets to be tough. Um, this is, this is another gray area, right? Um, this is one of those places where, where it's not the easiest thing to figure out exactly what the other side is going through either. Um, so if we're talking about it in LFG and, uh, somebody pulls, it may not be somebody from our group because who knows who's grouped up with whom? Number one, who knows who's watching LFG chat or not? And, uh, what exactly is going on? So this is, I, I, I just asked that everybody be mindful about this. Um, there have been certain instances where, uh, somebody says that they have a group together and then they say, oh, no, wait, hold on a sec. I don't have a group together, but my group is coming. Oh, wait, no, my group isn't coming, but they're about to hop online. How long do you wait? How long does, how long can a group wait before another, before another group on the, on the, on the server jumps on the, the boss? These are all part of the, part of the question and these are all part of the, part of the, uh, the unspoken rules of World of Warcraft. Um, I can't control that. All I can say is please be mindful of other people. Uh, and if you have guildies that want in, please invite them in if you have room. And if you don't, sometimes what ends up happening is that people don't get into a group. Um, and if you really want in on those boss kills, on the Shaa kills and stuff like that, I think those are all open to individuals now, right? So you can be able to jump in on those dynamically. Is, is that correct or am I wrong?
Oh, that's good. Sometimes I'll just sit by Shaa and just wait till a group gets there and then, you know, tag it.
Right.
That's a good thing to do.
So all you need to do is just jump in and tag it. If you're there, jump in and tag it. Uh, if you're not, then guess what? You're kind of screwed. Uh, but, you know, most likely it takes some time for those groups to get, get together. So you need to either act quickly, uh, or you need to wait for the next time that it's available. Uh, any other thoughts on that from the officers at all?
Oh, I agree. And I think it goes back to our credo with, uh, community teamwork and respect that, um, you know, obviously use your common sense and try not to alienate Guild members. But, you know, you gotta do what you gotta do.
That's right. I mean, you know, sometimes that boss isn't, it just isn't going to wait any longer. You can feel the tension building and everybody wants to go, go, go. Then somebody pulls. That's what happens. That's wow, man. That's part of the game. Uh, other questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I got a whisper about it. Um, I guess I had a question about the D and D channels in Mumble and if that can kind of be, the etiquette around that can kind of be discussed?
Um, here's the, here's the etiquette, uh, rules for all Mumble channels. Here's what, here's what I'm going to say and I'm going to, I'm going to say this now and I'm going to say it definitively. Um, public channels are PG channels. For those in the, for, for those in North America, you probably understand that. Uh, for those in Europe, that means family friendly. Um, all public channels, all public channels. That means every single thing that's labeled as public in Mumble, Guild Chat, we're talking LFG, we're talking LFO, every single one of those, uh, means, forums as well. Please, you know, just kind of keep it down because I know that there can be a little bit of a, uh, kerfuffle in there every once in a while. Um, but everything that's marked as public in Mumble, those are public channels. We keep those family friendly. Raid channels, party channels, the, these are for small groups. These are not for the public. Okay? These are for small, private groups. The D and D channels are included in that. The D and D channel just means do not disturb. Please let, let these people alone. Don't hop in there and just, you know, blah, 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 whatever. So, um, by the way, that sounder will be available later, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Um, but those channels are private channels or essentially private channels or non-public. Uh, meaning that they will not be monitored by an officer. Uh, they will not be monitored by me. I, there's a different Guild, there's a different community standard that's set when you get into a raid group or into a small group setup. Okay, there's a different community standard. I'm not going to monitor that. At the same time, you better be understanding that this is the, the, the community standards that we have as a Guild about respecting one another, about this being about community teamwork and respect. That's like the major thing. If any of those rules are, or if any of those policies, I guess, uh, are disrupted, then, then we have a problem. Language, I don't, that's up to you guys. Um, so public channels, family friendly, every other channel, hey, it's your channel as long as you have it. So please be respectful, please be kind, please understand that there are other people that have different ideas from yourself and let's all work together and make this happen. Anything else?
Clear on that? The party and raid channels, you are not including those as public channels.
Party and raid channels are not public channels. They are non-public channels. So just the ones that are, in Mumble especially, it's just the ones that are labeled public and the conference rooms. Okay? Anything else on, on that? Or anything else, I guess?
Well, real quick.
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry, it's about that. Um, if you, if you are having issues, uh, in a, in one of those private channels, yes, the officers don't sit in them and watch them, but you can always try to find an officer in one of the main channels and let us know or find someone in-game and we can always hop on if we're not on already. So we can always take care of those issues. Uh, we just don't actively police those channels because we leave you guys to your own devices.
Right, exactly. We're, we're leaving you alone. If you guys have problems with, uh, somebody popping in there or, and causing problems or maybe one of your teammates just spazzed out or something, I have no idea. But you can always, uh, contact an officer and we can try to help you, uh, figure out and resolve whatever situation may occur. Uh, any other questions?
Oh, this comes more of a question from me and then from, uh, Daylon who asked it in-game. Um, for the liaisons, is there a liaison for new members? Or like, do the liaisons have specific roles to help maybe new members or teams that have already progressed? I guess this is to Lou kind of thing.
Yeah, so, I mean, the liaisons are more for raid. So, but Lou, do you want to, you want to answer that at all?
Well, let me clarify, new raid members, like new people that want to raid.
Okay.
If you are new to the Guild and you are in need of assistance finding a raid team or you're having trouble, you know, navigating the forums or you're not really sure how to go about, you know, getting ahold of one of our many, 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 many raid teams, please contact us. We will be more than happy to help you. I know I spend at least two hours a day in the team pages. I'm very familiar with who needs what, what teams are, you know, going to whatever places. And we're more than happy to definitely give you a hand and, you know, help you, you know, find a team and maybe help you, you know, learn to use the forums if you're unfamiliar with them. You know, I mean, we have free agents, we have teams that are looking and then we have team pages. So it can be a little overwhelming, especially with the number of threads we do currently have right now. But we, you know, the four of us would be more than happy to help.
Yep. And again, 57 teams in the CTR Guild. I'm sure that none of them are ever looking for anybody to fill in ever. They're all set, ready to go, always on the ball and never looking for anybody.
I'm going to have to call you out on that one there, Zugg.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that. Um, okay. Let's, let's try to wrap this up. I want to answer maybe, uh, another question or two. So anybody else have a question?
Yeah, I got a.
Go ahead.
I have a question about PTR, uh, and our Guild's presence on the PTR.
I can answer that.
This, this answer is, uh, for Cage who asked that question. Uh, yes, Cage, we have a, uh, a Guild in the PTR. It's called the Bazuba Guabo Nation. And Cage actually started it up. Okay, what? Sorry, what was the question?
Nope, if you could just, um, you know, shout out like the server and let people know how to get into.
Who has that information?
I do.
Okay, go for it.
Yep, it's on the PTR. It's called the Bazuba Guabo Nation Guild on the Anastarian server. So it's the US PVE PTR server. Every member has the ability to invite. So if it's, you just look for the Bazuba Guabo Nation on the Anastarian US PVE server.
Right. And if you want to check that out, it's going to be. Yeah, it should be Alliance. Um, it's, it's all Alliance. It's all good. Uh, and if you guys want to check out like some of the new features that are coming, like flex rating and all that kind of stuff, that's, it could be kind of interesting. So. Uh, other, one, let's do one more. Anybody? Or is that it? Is that it? I shut everybody up?
I had a question about how to spell the Guild from the PTR.
Uh, Bazuba.
It's in the raid, it's in Guild Chat.
Bazuba Guabo Nation, B-A-Z-O-O-B-A-G-W-A-B-O. Bazuba Guabo. Bazuba, I think that, I think that worked. I don't know. If you look up B-A-Z-O-O, you're going to get somebody, probably Bazoo. Uh, so you can just do a, a who search for Bazoo and it should hopefully light up for you. I'm guessing. Um, anything else or is that it?
One question I just had, message real quick.
Yep.
What the heck does Bazuba Guabo mean?
Uh, Bazuba, oh, for that, you're going to have to listen to episode 43 of Convert to Raid, uh, the legendary episode where you will find out exactly what Bazuba Guabo means. Um, and, uh, and the, the interesting backstory behind that is this. Um, other than, other than meaning what it means, there was, there was a little hidden meaning of what it was. Okay, the hidden meaning of what it was, was that, um, that Coltrain, he has played a hunter before, believe it or not. And, uh, he did that on, uh, on Earthen Ring. I'm not sure if he still has his hunter or not. Uh, but he did that on Earthen Ring and his hunter, Blood Elf Hunter, by the way, not my favorite combination. I don't know. I'm kind of worried about him. But, uh, his pet was named Bazuba Guabo. That's how it started. So just a little note. I like it. All right. So that's going to be it for, um, for tonight for the Town Hall. Of course, if you have more questions or anything like that, please feel free, if you're in-game, jump into CTR LFO. Uh, we have operators standing by, probably, maybe. Um, uh, Sunday is when the new invite, uh, uh, policy kicks in. So Sundays, eight to noon, 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Mondays, 1:00 AM to 4:00 AM for you Aussies and, and late-nighters. Um, and then, uh, then again, 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM on Mondays. Thursdays, noon to four. That's our new setup for invites, uh, going on into the future. We're going to have, uh, officer signups and stuff like that to make sure that we can have people available for you during those times. Uh, and again, remember the Guild credo, the new Guild credo, community, teamwork and respect. Uh, and I expect that all of you guys are going to be living that, um, moving forward. And it, not that you're not already, by the way. Couple of, couple of incidents here and there. I understand that we're a very visible Guild. We're a very large Guild. Uh, we had over 900 members or 900 new characters invited into the Guild over the last couple of weeks. Um, with the 50% off sale, it was crazy. Uh, and we have, Darius, what was it? Forty-one, over 4,100, uh, individual members? Again, crazy.
10 billion.
10 billion members.
That is an accurate number.
So keep that in mind, guys. And, uh, we will, we will probably be doing this again next month, uh, right after invites as well. So for all you new, new members, welcome. I hope you're finding a home here. Uh, for all you veterans, we know you have a home here and we know where you live. Uh, so let that be a lesson to you.